Fair Board, 483rd, Neighbors. We're going to start our Trumbull County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for July 12, 2023. Our next public workshop will be Tuesday, July 18th at 10:00 a.m. back at the Commissioners' hearing room downtown. And our next regular meeting will be next Wednesday, July 19th at 10:30 a.m., also in the Commissioners' hearing room. I'd like to ask everyone to please stand and join us in our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all. Okay, at this time, I would like to bring up our Trumbull County Auditor Martha Yoder, and she's going to lead us in prayer.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for despair. We ask that you will bless it with safe, safety, and good weather. Lord, we just ask also that as we make decisions today, as our fellow county officials make decisions, give them grace and give their wisdom. And we ask all these things converted into a testament.
Thank you, Audrey Yoder.
I'd like to make a motion to move Agenda Number 17 to the front because we have an attorney who's getting paid by the hour. So, as soon as we quickly, quicker we get ahead, the more savings is coming.
He needs the mic, I'm sure.
Hold on, real quick. Matt, quick, can you start the roll, please?
Mr. Cancel Mesa.
Here.
Ms. Frenchco. Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Here's your folder, sir.
Yep, we gotta read the motions. One, one more second, sir. Right, I'm gonna read that here in a second once we get this. It'll take you. Good.
Item number 17 will be public discussion with Attorney Robert Burkey regarding procedural matters that will take place during the public hearing for the proposed annexation of 31.3801 acres from Howland and Vianna Townships to the City of Niles. The public hearing will take place on July 17, 2023, at 10:00 a.m. in the Commissioners' hearing room, 5th floor, 160 High Street Northwest, Warren, Ohio 444-81.
Do you have a motion?
Second, make a motion or second, I don't know what we're having.
Make a motion.
Make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Cancel Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Thank you. I emailed the Commissioners an agenda. I'd like to discuss, first of all, what reaction, if any, to any of these, or do we want to look down each split item and discuss it. Certainly, the first one that I incur the chair without the meeting, one of the questions that I have is, should we want me near the, near the table where you will be sitting in case questions come up? Or do I need to be there at all?
I, I would prefer, if possible, you would chair so I can dedicate my time to hearing the arguments both ways and understanding that stuff rather than running the meeting. I would prefer to be able to have that time to hear both sides clearly and fairly.
And that's satisfactory, would be.
I have a different opinion about how I asked him in the past, and I haven't had any equal response of to any statutory authority that would give the chairperson of the quasi judicial body when we're acting in that fashion to delegate that duty. And I haven't received any random of law or any, any authority saying that's permissible. In addition to that, if you are the chairperson, chairing the meeting is just allowing people to do them in a particular order. We already had our attorney prepare the agenda. Alls we would have to do is these few things, and we can save money by not having an attorney there for possibly eight to 10 hours.
I'm not aware that there's any case law on that, and I think it's a matter of process or procedure before the Commissioners. So, yes, certainly, I defer to the Commissioners if that's what they wish. The matter is just a matter of going through the script that we have, getting down to the testimony, having the attorneys or the interested or the necessary parties present their cases, that probably have their word on it, and then the Commissioners will permit and they'll open the meeting and enclose the meeting.
That's all you would have to do is introduce the parties, outline the proceedings, call them up individually, and then you can dedicate, take your time taking those and follow it. It's really, we've done the same thing with revocations and with grand history periods and certain capacity racked into judicial body in the chair and the board.
Commissioner Kanan-Layso, do you have any thoughts on this?
We have, in my eight years here, we have had different public hearings where the attorney does run the meeting, so it's not customary. We've had annexations, prosecutor's office has never met, never weighed in on that. I'm gonna defer to our legal counsel here, these are attorneys. If it's, if it's gonna be permissible, it's fine. I think the more time the Commissioners have to sit and listen and take in as much information as they can is probably valuable.
I would have, I've been asking for over two days now for some type of authority to show that that's permissible, I've never seen that before.
Well, I could not find that this is permissible.
Okay.
And if it's a prior product of procedure, I defer to the board.
Is this a serious matter? Is there an evidence they have an annexation from Townships to the City of Niles? And I believe that we need to make sure that we do everything procedurally correct in case there comes a fight or they could argue that we did follow proper procedure. My preference is to make sure that we're doing it absolutely correctly and that that doesn't open the door for them to use that as any type of argument to say that it wasn't proceeding procedurally correct. I prefer to have our board conduct the meeting because that's what the Board of Commissioners does.
Again, I defer to the board. We can address that Monday morning when we come forward to the hearing. And I'll go further for if there is a, if there's any case law that suggests that in a public meeting such as this on annexation matters that we can proceed with someone else. The board handling the meeting and not chairing the meeting doesn't mean that the chair is not chairing the meeting. It just means that the process is being administered by the board.
Yeah, I think with the, with the necessity and how important this is legal-wise, if we have our attorney representing us that is running the meeting, I think he would be a little more astute with this to make sure that he follows from his four years of experience in doing this stuff, proper procedure much better than we would regarding this. And I still defer, I think if he's a professional in this, he's representing us, they will have all their attorneys on both sides. I just think it's, it's professional courtesy also with him to be able to run that meeting.
Commissioner, I say that when we're acting as a Board of Commissioners in a quasi judicial fashion, it's different than running a meeting. It's very exact when you're not comfortable with it. I'd be happy to do it until the county might.
I defer to the board.
I still say Attorney Burkey, I would feel more comfortable. Commissioner Kanan-Layso.
Yeah, I defer to our president and to our attorney. There's no existing case law. Yeah, these are administrative decisions. It doesn't mean that the chair is not the chair of the board. It just means that he's delegating authority to run the process through our attorney. There's nothing to disagree with that.
Have you ever seen in a judicial proceeding that a judge does that?
We are a quasi judicial.
Oh, that is, that's what I'm saying.
This is a public, please. The same item on my agenda, on the agenda I submitted to you was.
Please control the, so you're gonna have to wait till public comments?
Is to set, should, should we, if we, if it is decided, should there be a time limit set for when it's time for the general public to present any testimony to the board? Should there be a time limit set?
Yes, that will be the same as we would in any other type of a meeting somewhere.
And that is three minutes, two minutes, three minutes, one, oh.
I think a little longer than two minutes regarding this. I mean, this is, there are some people, some real concerns. There will be some neighbors. There will be some people that I think two minutes is not enough time. I think that would be shortchanging them and shortchanging us on getting all the information in a two-minute thing. I, I would like to limit it to five minutes per moment myself.
I would prefer a little bit, a little bit less if it's, if it's to be, you know, a packed, packed room. And they're always getting, mind you, both sides are already gonna have legal counsel there presenting their, their arguments.
Again, I defer to the board as to setting a time limit. I think time limit is necessary.
Those two then will agree on what's going to happen, if they agree with you.
I had submitted to the clerk a proposed agenda. I thought it was appropriate that the agenda be handed out to the general.
How about, how about we split the difference until we go four minutes? Four minutes it is.
Four minutes, there we go. Not a minute. Four minutes it is, okay. What about, I sent an agenda and I have revised it a little bit. I thought it should, it was appropriate to, for handout to the public that comes in to have an agenda so they see the process is going to be followed. If there are any questions about that?
You were apparently to have to add the public comments in the time of.
In the agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah, correct. And Paul and I, the clerk and I will finish that up and connect. I guess you will make copies and have it available Monday morning. The, I, I would anticipate that there's gonna be a large crowd. Questions will come up whether or not the Commissioners' hearing room has sufficient space to handle. And we get to an overload situation, it means interfering with the public's right to be part of the process. So, is there any more speeding the board on that?
Not necessarily. We've had packed rooms before. I know there was an issue in the annexation before. I was the Commissioner, I went into the meeting, and Commissioner Cancel Mesa was there. It was, it was packed, but at the same time, we've already noticed the meeting. And so that would require us to reset that at a public meeting and then put it out there by Friday. I believe our conference room is adequate, and we also have access to the public because we have Zoom and other avenues where someone can participate if they're not able to be there physically.
Was the board's intention to provision this on Zoom? To have this on Zoom?
It would be.
Any questions from the public? They can, they can log into the panel. All right, what happens if 300 people show up? To the meeting or to the chair?
To the meeting. I, I think we, we obviously need to, we need to check with our building code and make sure we're following all the rules and regulations there, obviously, for any hazards or fire dates or anything like that. And unfortunately, there's gonna have to be a limit. If that means, I mean, it's more a pleasure, but if that means having another hearing, if needing to accommodate other people or encouraging those people that are coming in and can't be accommodated to use Zoom and the other, and another facility or on their phones, I mean, that's, that's probably the only option we have. But I know, I know it's a oddly contested issue, and I know it's gonna be well-attended, but I don't foresee 300 people. I could be wrong. Audrey Yoder, you can add some remarks to this.
I was gonna say that we shouldn't ever say that we're limiting because I think we did a couple of times.
We may be, I need to check with the members, but we may be able to do a little bit of overflow in the conference room that we have and Zoom it there.
That would be great.
But let me check with him. I'm, I'm here all day, and of course, you know, our connectivity is not the greatest. So, I will, I'll meet with him tomorrow, and I will let him mature itself, all right?
Three ideas.
That's good, so thank you.
I'm happy that there is alternative planning going on, so that needs to be anticipated. The next one is the, the, I, the attorneys, and I have been invited by the necessary parties' attorneys to participate in a number of conversations. And we're having our last conversation this Friday. So, the question that comes up, which will come up if we're not, and there is a large crowd, and we're not able, we're not able to finish the meeting on the 17th. And we thought about a new date, a determined date to continue the hearings. So, it would be the next available date.
I think that's gonna be contingent on the attorneys for the plaintiffs, counsel, and yourself. Your schedules, I'm sure, are pretty muddied up, and this is something that we're gonna have to accommodate everybody. So, I don't know at this time, we can just state that without having them involved in the conversations.
What would happen is Monday, while we're in the hearing, if we don't get through it, we would decide there.
Right. With all the parties involved.
With all the parties involved.
The problem or the circumstance that makes them up is that, let's see, the order, the order is the Commissioners go first, then City of Niles, and then the Townships. And we hope that they wanna try to get through their presentation so one doesn't have two weeks to think about cross-examining the other. The side that's already presented the testimony.
Correct.
But the hope is that we can get the necessary party's testimony done. And there might be, you know, I'm gonna say six to 10 witnesses that might be available, that might be presented before we go.
I might.
By the necessary party.
Well, fortunately, the two Townships are represented by the same Council. So, that should be a bit more expeditious. And I would say that it would likely be at the end of that week. I don't know that we have anything next Thursday or Friday, but tentatively, I would imagine that we could do it maybe Friday.
Well, certainly, to facilitate the announcement. There are, I tried to, I tried to get witness lists out of the parties. I've had the generality, the administrative people from the Townships, administrative people from the city. That's what I expect to see in the general public's testimony. A court reporter has been ordered. A court reporter will be available for the balance of the day, and who else will be available for the continuing.
When, when, I wanna make sure that the board did this properly. There was a, was it generalized to hire?
No, by statute, by statute, either, either party can request, any of the necessary parties can request a court reporter, and once the request is made, you have to fight back.
Understandably so, but the Board of Commissioners still has to authorize the contract or services that we should probably have as a motion or as a generalized, if that's on today, Friday, next week.
If that's the case, I can request it. Navy Baker, Youngstown, this week, court reporting service. I talked to NADY Y, Navy Baker.
Did you know the hourly rate?
I'd have to dig through here. The hourly rate is $175 for the first two hours, and $80 an hour after that. I, I believe that that story.
Okay. I'm gonna make, you can purport, I'll make a motion right now so we have it.
I don't know that I can purport. I did bring the entire document. So, I do not have, I was gonna say, the paperwork I brought, I do not have. I can return to the office and get it all.
Okay.
But I believe it's $80 an hour, $175 for the first two hours and $80 an hour after that.
I'd like to make a motion from the floor to hire Navy Baker for court reporting for the annexation hearing at the rate of $175 for the first two hours and $80 thereafter, subject to confirmation by, subject to confirmation by Attorney Burkey.
Yeah, $175 for the first two hours, $80 an hour after that.
Need a second.
I guess, in my eight years here, we've never voted on a court reporter. That's part of the statute, that's part of the process. That's all right, that's not an action of the board necessarily that has to happen. Even in meetings a few attended, in the annexation meetings a few attended, we've never voted on a court reporter there. So, I, I'm not sure that that's even a necessary thing. I will second it. I will second it, I've got the rock, but I don't know if it all matters.
I believe you have to have that for them to present their invoice and be paid by the county. There needs to be something authorized.
That's, that's not true.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Cancel Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
I've submitted to you sections of the statute that deal with the responsibilities of the board as it comes down to the decision-making time. After we hear the evidence, if there's any legal questions that need to be answered that you do your considerations of, we'll serve the sentience of the people if they can answer for you.
So, we have, we have the ability to make a motion to adjourn the annexation on that date for within 30 days.
That's correct. But.
And then that would be a motion to take that pending 30 days.
As I presented, now, there's a transcript that we're gonna follow. I presented that to you. A lot of you. That, that will be read into the record. And at the end, there is either a motion to continue the case or the case has not, the presentation has been completed, or to take it under advisement, take the hearing under advisement. Hopefully, we have, this transcript will help improve the process for its sake. That was the whole purpose of giving the transcript. On the, on the script, I'm sorry, the script, if I sound. So, I appreciate your taking me on the turn and.
I do have a couple of things that are related to the paper that contains the law that we're supposed to make our decisions based on. I referenced some other sections, section 79. I think I heard you on the one you received or something before. Where I wrote this is referencing another code. I'd like to see the other code, if that's possible.
Okay, well, that's, yes, I can certainly make that available.
That's where it is. Even it.
That, that's one of the, that's the situation with the votes. The vote says according to this, according to that.
Yes.
Might get all of those.
Thank you, I'd review that.
Sure. Any further questions?
Is there, from your communications with the attorneys, any chance for an agreement before the hearing on Monday? Or is that shit sale? Is this a, is this a go?
That has certainly been discussed at the various meetings. And the attorneys have met diligently on this over the beginning, the initial finding of this. But the answer, unfortunately, is no. And I don't think at this point, there are certain offers back into it. They, they have gone.
Yeah, Mr. Burkey, thank you for your time.
I won't thank you for taking me.
Okay, at this time, we are going to, there's not a resolution, and we're gonna take care of the fun stuff now. All the boring legal stuff is done. And I'd like to read here, "A Resolution by the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners in recognition of the 2023 Trumbull County 4H Youth Members and Adult Volunteers. Whereas the Board of Commissioners takes great pride in recognizing the hard work and dedication of the 525 outstanding 4H youth members of Trumbull County, Ohio. And whereas, the 4H program provides a positive environment where youth from Trumbull County can share the subject matter and skills they have learned from their projects and demonstrate them during Fair Week. Thousands of people from the Mahoning Valley visit the fair to see these exhibits. And whereas, 4H would not be possible without the 93 trained adult volunteers who spent countless hours mentoring, educating, listening, and guiding these fine young adults. These volunteers teach their individual 4H members how to run their own meetings. They like officers, vote on all issues pertaining to their club, organize fundraisers, and how to balance the club's checking account. And whereas, the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners commends our 4H participants for their time and dedication towards these projects and their participation in 25 traditional clubs. This year's 4H slogan is "Paint a Bright Future with 4H." And whereas, the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners also wishes to say a special thank you to all the staff and volunteers who work so diligently, giving guidance and support to these youth. Therefore, being resolved, the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners urges all citizens of Trumbull County to support the efforts of these young people who are the future of Trumbull County. Our children are one of the greatest assets and should be commended for the success and accomplishments through the 4H program." Okay, at this time, I'd like to bring up Ashley Meredith, 4H educator. If you wanna bring your kids up.
You can go down on the floor.
Go down.
Yeah.
Good morning, Trumbull County Commissioners, staff, and attendees. My name is Ashley Meredith, and I am the 4H educator in Trumbull County. We appreciate the opportunity to share with you this morning a glimpse, a glimpse of the impact Trumbull County 4H has had on our youth. Paint a bright future with 4H has been our promotional theme in 2023. Being a 4H alum myself, right here in Trumbull County, I can attest to the hands-on learning experiences I had as a youth member as well as the countless opportunities to become a better leader, role model, and citizen. With confidence, I can say that 4H helped establish a sturdy foundation of important core values in my life and helped me make connections with adults who would encourage me to do my best, create lifelong friendships and mentorships. Approaching seven years in the administrative role, it has been a joy to watch 4H members mature and take on leadership or mentoring roles with younger members. The growth I see amongst our group is both inspiring and rewarding. Trumbull County 4H is a multifaceted program and supports over 25 traditional 4H clubs, two school enrichment programs, which include Real Money, Real World, and Trickless, resident champion programs, STEM Day Camps, and special interest groups involving teen traffic safety. Each year, we look to expand our outreach throughout the county. I encourage you to take or to look on the first and by page of the pamphlet if you have one, we have a program that we pass to learn more about Ohio 4H and Trumbull 4H members and the project distribution in our county. 4H successes lie in the hands of dedicated volunteers and program partnerships. 4-H successes lie in the hands of dedicated volunteers and program partnerships. We are thankful for the talented group of adults, the support of our commissioners, and other organizations that keep pushing us forward. By supporting the 4-H way, we are allowing 4-H members ages five to eighteen the opportunity to learn more about letting a hand in their communities, strengthening networking capabilities, developing leadership skills, increasing responsibility, teaching sportsmanship, and much, much more. I have fourteen 4-H members with me today who are very passionate about 4-H. I hope that you may get to see a glimpse of the impact 4-H has made in their lives and how 4-H has inspired them. They would like to introduce themselves, so I'm going to call them up to stand in front of the stage. We're going to go down the line. Everyone is going to introduce themselves with their first and last name, their age, and their current 4-H club.
Hello, I'm Trumbull County Area.
I'm Addison Thompson, I'm part of the Trumbull County Equestrians, and I'm eighteen.
I'm Addison Ward, I'm part of the Trumbull County Equestrians, and I'm eighteen.
I'm Auntie Girl, I'm part of the Trumbull County...
This is Emily Bailey, and she's a member of the Kinsley Dudes.
I'm Isabella Bailey, I'm a member of the Kinsley Dudes, Trumbull Bash Shepherds, and I'm a friend.
I'm Lee Bailey, I'm eighteen, and I'm part of the Kinsley Dudes.
My sister is Sophie, I'm eighteen, and I'm a part of the Trumbull County Wolf Club.
I'm Georgia Bonar, I'm nineteen years old, I'm part of Rockville 4-H Friends.
I'm Ethan Pulva, and I am fourteen years old, I'm part of Cheese Sports Pioneer.
Brock Pierce, I'm sixteen, I'm part of Happy Ed.
I'm Justin Hall, seventeen, I'm part of the Fleshy.
I'm Lucas Stull, I'm eleven years old, I'm a part of Pal Dorros and Happy Ed.
If there are other 4-H members that are in the crowd, can you stand to be recognized? Can we get them out of the class? I would like now to call up Isabella Bailey to express our thanks on behalf of the 4-H program and members.
Hello. Hello, I'm Isabella Bailey. I am the 2023 4-H princess. This is my seven-year-old daughter. I raise meat chickens, lambs, and complete non-animal projects. I would like to thank the county commissioners for letting us be a part of their meeting. Their support in 4-H makes so many things possible, and we could not thank them enough. Without their funding and support, without their funding and support, they are a huge reason we are able to come to this, and feel.
Thank you, Isabella. I'm going to call on Brock Pierce to come up and lead us in the 4-H pledge. If you know the 4-H pledge, please say it with us, and if you're not familiar with it, it's inside of our program. If everyone could stand, please, thank you.
As a clear thinking, my heart's created loyalty, my hands are large service, my health is better living for my club, my community, my country, and my world.
We would now like to present a small gift to the commissioners and staff in appreciation. If you'd have those members, please come up.
My man, I bought you duck last year.
Thank you.
Good to see you, buddy.
Good to see you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we would like to invite some of our 4-H members up on stage to share a short speech with you this morning. And so first, I'm going to call up William Bailey.
Hello, my name is William Bailey, I'm eight years old, I'm a cloverbud in the Kinsley Dudes Second Edition. I'm excited to be here today to tell you why I like 4-H. My favorite thing about 4-H is I get to try new activities. Some of the fun things I did this year as a cloverbud were showing lambs, baking muffins, and doing sandwiches. First, my favorite sandwich was dyeing celery. We put celery sticks and colored water and let it sit for a few weeks, and then brought it back to see how they changed. But my favorite thing I got to do this year was going to Camp Whatwood. At Camp Irons, I have to throw a downland, shoot some shots, shoot bow and arrows, and rifles. The food at camp was really good. My favorite was the strawberry turkey. At Fair this year, I cannot wait to do cloverbud leave lines with Trumbull Bash Shepherds. I get to help at the dairy block for the first time this year. As well, I also get to do cloverbud show and tell after this. There is only one thing I do not like about 4-H. I have to get up early on Saturday morning to go to meetings, but my mom's involved here all day.
Thank you, William. Next, we'll have Georgia Bonar.
Hello, my name is Georgia Bonar, and I've been a member of Rockville 4-H Friends for the past nine years. I'd like to start out with a big thank you to our commissioners and your support, 4-H, and the fair. As this is my final year in 4-H, I thought it'd be the perfect opportunity to talk about the pledge and the motto and what it has meant to me in the past nine years. The first time I heard the 4-H pledge, I said to myself, "All right, this is pretty cool, I like the hand motion with it." But it wasn't until a few years ago that I really understood what it meant, and it wasn't until I had a few full circle moments. My older club members have always been people I look up to. They were right there to teach me how to show and care for my animals. I remember my second year of 4-H, I entered a scanning project with my older club member, Josie Wagner, who at the time was the eighth group above me. Three years ago, I had the opportunity to compete alongside her in her final year. I finished second place, and she finished first in rabbit showmanship. I wouldn't have had it any other way, because I've always looked up to Josie. It felt truly amazing being second place with her. It was also at that moment I realized I was now one of the older members and a mentor to young 4-Hers. Last year, I had the opportunity to serve as 2022 4-H queen. This too was another full circle moment. In my beginning years of 4-H, I watched as Josie was crowned, as well as Amanda and Jessica Wiley. These girls were always ladies I looked up to when it came to 4-H, with their knowledge, confidence, kindness, and eagerness to help young 4-Hers. It was an honor to serve as queen, and yet again, a reminder that I had followed in my footsteps to become one of the girls I had looked up to. I realized that the path my mentors led for me was originally formed by the 4-H pledge. They were knowledgeable, kind and loyal, helpful and considerate, and they always created an inviting atmosphere wherever they went. I am now a mentor to the younger members of my club, and it makes me so proud to watch them succeed. And for the motto, "To Make the Best Better," that has stuck with me from one of my first years. 4-H has always pushed me to learn more, try harder, and to persevere. As I go into my second year of college, I know that I carry the values I learned in 4-H, and for that I am very grateful for this organization. Thank you.
Thank you, Georgia. Next, we'll have Hunter Miller.
Good morning, my name is Hunter Miller, I'm twelve years old, and I'm fourth year of 4-H. I live in East Davis, and my family supports the Nerrish and Green Farm. I show cattle, and I'm a parent. 4-H has taught me to be a responsible and caring animal each day. I shall feed, screw up, or year at shows around the state. We show our animals at the fair, we completed a project which helped us learn how to keep records and run a project with a business. We keep detailed records of our animals, helping what it costs to rate our animals. This way, we know if we made a profit when we show our animals at the fair. We sell our animals at a live auction on Saturday at the fair. I would like to invite all of you to come and support the 4-H pledge for Trumbull County on Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you, Hunter. I would like to invite Tracy Shockey to come up next.
Hello, my name is Tracy Shockey. Now I'd like to take a minute to tell you how being involved in 4-H has impacted me. As a member of Trumbull County 4-H over the last nine years, I have participated in the following ways. As a member of Trumbull County Wild Clubbers 4-H Club, a team representative for students making a safer highway or smash, I am a camp counselor, and I am a team volunteer for card games. I absolutely love all of the skills, amazing friendships, and all the memories that I have made through the participation in these groups. One is the leadership opportunities that I was able to experience as being a camp counselor at 4-H camp for three years, and I wouldn't say it for anything in the world. As a 4-H camp counselor, I am responsible for kids' lives for a whole week, making different leadership skills such as how to be flexible, how to stay prepared throughout today, and how to deal with many personalities, and this is all done without having our thumbs. Camp is an amazing place to learn to take from your feet and to really just learn amazing things. Also, you make amazing memories and friendships. 4-H has helped me learn really good life skills that I will take with me as I move into this next chapter of my life, such as being a leader and stepping up when people need me, being able to work as a team, and being able to manage time well. I wouldn't have been able to learn all these skills and improve them like I did if it wasn't for 4-H. Through my years, I have also learned that you can't give up when things get hard, because then you'll never be able to grow and discover new things. Without 4-H, I would not be as prepared to go to college and form my future. 4-H has so many chances to explore everything that I wanted to, and has helped me learn that everything you do has consequences, whether they are good or bad. Not only has 4-H given me many opportunities, but it has also taught me very valuable lessons, like how you can't wait for the last second to get things done, or it is okay to put yourself out there, because that is the only way to truly find who you are. So as I am ready to age out of 4-H and move onto the next part of my life, the skills and lessons I have learned throughout all the years will definitely be in my mind as I'm making decisions and going through life. Thank you to everyone who has pushed me to try harder, and thank you commissioners and Ashley for giving me this opportunity to tell you how 4-H has helped me become who I am today.
Thank you, Tracy. Next, I'd like to call up Lucas Stull.
Hello, everyone. My name is Lucas Stull. I am eleven years old and will be going into the sixth grade of a Bragg Middle School. This will be the third year I've been 4-H. I have been the calmar of the club for three years, showing dairy cows. This year, I joined the Happy Hand Club, and will be showing a market dog. 4-H has been a great experience for me. Being in the dairy club, I have learned so much. It's been fun for me because my dad showed dairy cows when he was a kid. I got to learn a lot from him. This year, we have spent a lot of time with the family, learning about wolves together. No one in my family has ever shown a market dog. These experiences have helped me grow in my knowledge and love for animals. I will be in a warm, respectful environment. Thank you commissioners for your support for the 4-H program. It has impacted my life and almost great.
Thank you, Lucas. Next, we'll have Abigail Potter.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Abigail Potter, and I am a primary member of Trumbull County Wild Club. If you want to do the math, that could satisfy my project for you. I have been involved in coming to the fair since I was a little bit, with my big brother. I did not grow up with 4-H, but today I want to talk about a dream I like to have there. First, I want to tell you the magic chicken in town. I did start early at five thirty, six AM, and we packed up what we would need from home that day and head to the fairgrounds, which are by seven AM. Me and my brother usually start out at the magic barn, and we clean cages, we bathe water all the rabbits, and we have ten cages of little rabbits. We then head over to the poultry barn to clean the cages and bathe the water. We only have four chickens, so it's not that bad. I then head back and must clean the cats and bathe the rabbits. We usually get done about eight days per week, then I then have to get ready for whichever animal I show that day, like studying, grooming, and grooming the animal and getting my girlfriend. Most of the animals show in days of two hours. I also need to check on my animals several times a day to make sure they all have food to eat. I also divide my time into lines, usually one day, which involves cleaning up eggs, checking on all the animals, and dogs, which I can't knowing and telling them about the animals. This doesn't include all the extra activities such as the grand march, walking the bungee park, public speaking contests in Long Island, Jersey. I also try to have some time to do the trip fence, which is not 4-H, as my connect. Day ends at nine, ten PM, we go home, go to the barn, we return on all the animals one last time, and put them down. To this day, I get home about eleven, eleven-thirty, or it's dinner. The week is a fair so exciting, but so rewarding. Some of my favorite memories have came from, 4-H teaches us so much. It has taught me how to be respectful, not only for my animals, it has taught me, it has given me self-esteem and what I need to know about people. Thank you, and I'll keep on continuing to support 4-H, okay, and try again.
Thank you, Abigail. And then our last speech, we're going to hear from Addison Thompson.
Hello, my name is Addison Thompson, I'm a member of the Trumbull County Equestrians 4-H Club, and I've been a part of 4-H for ten years. To start off, I'd like to thank each and every one of you for being here. The prompt of this speech is to talk about 4-H memories and what you have learned through your 4-H career. To be able to tell you that, I have to start from the beginning. When I was about five or six, some of my best friends were my older cousins, Kate and Hunter. They had 4-H show pics, me being the younger, early cousin, I wanted to do everything that they did. But however, I wanted to show groundhog, really, really, really bad. But there's no groundhog club, so my mom was like, "Hey, why don't we show pigs?" From pigs, I went to steers. And throughout my 4-H career, I've met some of my best friends, mentors, and made my best memories. Every year leading up to fair, and the fair week had brought so many memories, including playing kickball in horse arena, pushing a card through parade, wearing sleepovers... pushing a card through parade, wearing sleepovers, and showing along some of my best friends. 4H has taught me so many lessons, including responsibility, how to talk to adults as young kids, how to respect others, how to lend a helping hand, and how to be a leader in youth and more. If I did not have the opportunity to participate in 4H, I would not be the person I am today. Thank you to 4H for creating many opportunities for me to explore. Thank you County Commissioners and Ashley for your values.
Thank you, Addison. In conclusion, thank you Commissioner Malloy, Commissioner Frenchco, Commissioner Cancilla Mesa, and staff for your continued support of our program. We will continue to accomplish the 4H motto to make the best better in Trumbull County. Thank you. And as our 4H members are busy protecting their animals for show, they are accused of this.
Okay, we're gonna take a quick couple minute recess and then we'll be right back.
It's gonna be okay. You're on the phone. Am I not good enough for you?
I have great stuff. My dad's coach. That's a mom. Bless them. I did that. You're a genius. I'm like, no, I'm a mom. And she's crazy. She's super grateful that she showed me.
They look pretty damn good.
Look at the hair. Look at the hair.
He was pretty strict about off.
He had not turning fees in the last year. Also, the kind that's gotten 20 years.
So we got customer of the year gift card.
See him at law?
Hey, I was worried here.
I'm honoring you. You passed that. It gave me. So it's fine. I just look.
I got.
Yes, we gotta get moving.
Did the show?
I didn't even look.
Did you get one? What did you get? Are you sure? I think it's a blanket.
Oh, it's a blanket.
Blanket. Very nice.
Those kids are cute.
Those kids are, they are amazing. They all turn out to be amazing. They are.
Thank you for saving the county from a thousand dollars. Nobody thinks about that. I know.
So, one, two. Look, a lot of the 4H kids and their parents, see, they'll have their sales, so they work hard. They like bathe their animals, show their animals. It's something to see.
Okay, everyone, let me start making their way back towards the seats, please.
Yeah, you could go. Yeah.
I'm going to see. That side without my name. What's that? That's a separate key because someone took the Commissioner's key last night they couldn't find. So I had to sign this key out. Maybe sign it on my.
If it works, yeah. That would be great. Because she's gonna see if I could use that microphone.
Yeah, you could. That's better.
It's hard to switch that in work. Oh, perfect. Thank you so much. Thank you.
And if anyone needs a talk, you can always swap yours out.
Need a motion to restart or anything? Motion to reconvene.
Ms. Frenchco? And Mr. Cancilla Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Start with item number one.
Just hold it close to your mouth.
To dispense with reading the minutes of the regular meeting dated July 6th, 2023, and accept and approve the video recording of the July 6th, 2023 Commissioners' Regular Meeting as the official meeting minutes.
Motion approved.
Sorry.
Mr. Cancilla Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Because we didn't receive them until Thursday and then this morning, and I didn't get a chance to read them.
Item number two, to approve the bills.
Motion approved. Sorry.
Mr. Cancilla Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number three, to approve additional appropriations.
Motion approved. Sorry.
Mr. Cancilla Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Because when I received my agenda, all of the items were heading, and I believe to review them before we put on a map.
Item number four, to transfer appropriations.
Motion approved. Sorry.
Mr. Cancilla Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
The council board hasn't approved charts where I have reviewed, and I haven't either because I wasn't providing anything.
Item number five, to receive the admitted certificate of the County Budget Commission, number 12, 2023.
Motion approved. Sorry.
Mr. Cancilla Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
We're saying we're ready to go.
Item number six, to approve a school resource officer agreement by and between the Trumbull County Commissioners, Trumbull County Sheriff, Paul S. Monroe, and the Champion Local School District Board of Education. For police protection services for the Champion Local School District, its buildings and activities, personnel, students, and public on site for the 2023-2024 academic fiscal school year, July 1st, 2023 through June 1st. July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024. The Champion Local School District agrees to pay the Trumbull County Sheriff's Office
Motion approved.
Second.
I don't think the board will review.
Wait, I'm sorry, before you go in anything, you keep saying what the board did and what the board didn't do. With all due respect, Commissioner, you have no idea what other board members have done or have... Have done. So just speak for yourself.
Okay, so last week at the meeting, there was not going to be any work session because of the fair and as far as I understand, the board hasn't had that meeting.
We have not, but I did my research on my own. I spoke with the sheriff last night this morning.
Okay, did any... I personally have not received anything that verified that all actual installed costs are covered by the contract amount.
Did you ask for it?
It should be submitted to the commissioners upon proving a contract specialty with the back to furniture. This isn't available budget. Because it's not, in an essence, everyone in Trumbull County is subsidizing the cost.
The legacy costs are covered, the worker's comp is all taken into account, the hospitalization is taken into account. There is no warrant there on the vehicle, so that's... No void, can't charge it for something that's not happening. So, yeah, everything is taken into account, into this process.
There's been nothing submitted to the board of commissioners aside from the actual...
They just got a workshop with us.
What workshop?
A workshop that we had two weeks ago, that all these contracts, all these school resource officers, or the soft costs are rolled into them.
So they told you that?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, Bill... If you make a complaint, it's lying to us, then I don't know what you're doing. Deputy Bill in the way, but he gave us a rundown of what they did with Bristol and the schools. How that works. And I... I know this applies to the same thing with Champion. They're all written the same.
I prefer to see a report that shows what the cost... What the actual cost are, the soft costs, and ensure that those are covered, especially given the financial situation of the fair. So it's... I just want to...
Mr. Cancela Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Because nothing was submitted to prove that all the costs were covered?
No.
Item number seven, to approve school resource officer agreement by and between the Trumbull County Commissioners, Trumbull County Sheriff, Paul S. Monroe, and the Newton Falls School District Board of Education for police protection and services for the Newton Falls Local School District, its buildings and activities, personnel, students, and public on site for the 2023-2024 academic fiscal school year, July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024. The Newton Falls Local School District agrees to pay the Trumbull County Sheriff's Office
Motion approved.
Sorry.
Mr. Cancela Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Because there's no proof that all the soft costs were covered in the contract amount and nothing was provided to the board of commissioners to verify...
Mr. Frenchco, please don't speak for the board of commissioners. Please do not speak for the board of commissioners.
Letter first.
It's not discussion. When you're voting, you have the ability to assert some reasons for your evidence about what's going on. Discussion has already passed about a second. So, back to the place.
Yeah, but you're turning your vote on yes or no then. If you want to discuss...
I am permitted to assert some reasons.
You are not permitted to lie off the rest of the board.
The board commissioners was not provided any optimization that shows that all the costs were covered by the contract. And that's the reason for my evidence.
I'm not going to take the safety of our children in schools to be up for debate and utilize that as a way to take a cheap shot at the sheriff's department. If the sheriff's department wants to double the cost on this, whatever they got to do or lower it in half, the safety of our kids is too important to that. This is not the sword to die on here when you're talking about safety of kids in school.
It's not about safety, it's nature of the cost.
It's not about safety. It's about a school resource officer. And you're holding up because you have... You failed to ask him for the soft costs and the hard costs. Just send an email, ask him for that. He will reply or come to the workshop meeting. That's all.
It's not about a discussion. I want to be able... We're allowed to be able to review things and to make sure that our costs are covered and not to just rubber stamp everything that's put in front of us. I believe that we should be reviewing things and they should be providing us with those... With that information to demonstrate that the costs are covered. You just went ahead and said that...
No, we had discussions with...
That they're covered.
We had discussions with you and the major. Which you didn't have, which I urge you to have.
Just because someone tells you something. I'd be doing the public in the service just to say yes because someone told me that. I want to look at that and there's nothing that I provided but the contract. We should be taking our jobs a bit more seriously rather than just rubber stamping what's put in front of us. I'm not saying that we shouldn't be approving it, but we do need to make sure that the costs are covered.
You can figure the cost of an officer and roll in the PDR's pickup, roll in the worker's comp, and roll in the hospitalization and see for yourself if these officers correct. Because that's what they did.
Nothing about a contract given to us.
Okay, next item, Madam clerk.
Item number eight, to reappoint the individuals listed as members of the Trumbull County Local Corrections Planning Board for three-year term commencing July 30th, 2023 and ending July 29th, 2026. They are the Honorable Philip Vigorito and the Honorable Jeffrey Dean Adler. And I do have an error here, I have Keith Evans, the request by, and I believe that's Ms. Tracy, so I do need to change that, apologize for that error.
Motion approved.
Sorry.
What correction have you done, clerk?
Sorry, ma'am.
Mr. Cancela Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number nine, to approve, change order number two, final with potwell tanks incorporated. This is for contract A for the Mineral Ridge Hydraulics Improvement Project, known as County Project Two, W15, located in the Mineral Ridge Public Water System, Weathersfield Township, and a reduction of $20,000. This revises the total contract amount to $2,045,458.15. This is as a... Sorry. A result of the electric... Electrical company charges allowance of the item not being utilized.
Motion approved.
Sorry.
Mr. Cancela Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number 10, to receive and place on file the monthly activities report for the Trumbull County Dog Kennel for the month of June 2023.
Motion approved.
This is a new one I sent you because sanitary took a transfer off and I sent you all a new one. We did...
But I did the end, I believe.
We provided you a new one this morning. Over there.
Yes, but I'm reviewing it.
Sorry, ma'am.
I have my nose on the ones that I did my review with, so this is number... Are there any other changes?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Malloy on the floor?
Sorry.
Mr. Cancela Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number 11, to approve the promotion of Mr. Larry Infant as fiscal specialist, a non-bargaining employee with the Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services. This is effective July 31st, 2023. Mr. Infant will be paid $24.61 per hour with full county benefits. He'll be required to serve a nine-month probationary period.
Motion approved.
Sorry.
Mr. Cancela Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Because the individual selected only ranked higher because he scored higher in his subjective categories and other candidates had more experience and higher education and there was no... There's no backup information relative to the testing interview and one of the categories was actually presentation. So... There was also no hiring committee and it appears as if someone was taken up based on subjective standards and instead of someone who had higher education and other experience. I have to vote no and also request that the county look at making sure that their hiring processes are improved and that they give us the information they need to... To make the decision relative to the hiring. Because it was missing... My packet was missing anything except for the score sheet, so it doesn't contain anything about the presentation and interview or the testing. No.
Item number 12, to grant the special annual supplier fleet permits, Family Tool Supply Incorporated and Diamond Well Services LLC.
Motion approved.
Sorry.
Mr. Cancela Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number 13, to grant a right-of-way permit, this is with the Minne East Ohio.
Motion approved.
Sorry.
Mr. Cancela Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number 14, to concur with the Trumbull County Engineers Department and authorize the clerk of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to advertise for letters of interest for engineering services for the TRU on South Main Street, Warren City Number One Bridge.
Motion approved.
Sorry, ma'am.
Mr. Cancela Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number 15, to concur with the Trumbull County Planning Commission and authorize the following to select G and D group. And that is the most qualified engineering firm to perform the necessary professional engineering services required for the completion of the PY 2022 CDVG Critical Infrastructure Grant of Talented Avenue Storm Drainage Improvements Project in Liberty Township and authorize staff of the Trumbull County Planning Commission to begin scoping and price proposal negotiation process with G and D group to be carried out in coordination with Liberty Township and the Trumbull County Engineers' Office.
Motion approved.
Sorry, ma'am.
Mr. Cancela Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Because the selection... There is a selection committee and they weren't from the same department. They actually justified the selection by giving a critical evaluation that was evident based on their notes and their scoring. Yes.
Item number 16. This is to authorize the sub-three and agreement between the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services, the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners, the Trumbull County Workforce Development Board, and the Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services for the period of July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2025. This agreement establishes terms, conditions, and requirements governing the administration and use of allocated funds for workforce development activities in the local area from the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act.
Motion approved.
Sorry.
Mr. Cancela Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes, and they did a great job providing detailed information through you. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our regular agenda for today. And I'd like to make a comment here also, on behalf of the board and myself. First off, I'd like to commend the fair board for the way the grounds look this week. I know you guys worked awful hard. I've never seen the fair look as in good a shape as it is right now. Between the flowers, between the work that was done with parking lots, between the new roofs that we have already, the grandstand with the advertising you have there. Everything looks fantastic. I'd also like to thank the board and the previous board before me. We've appropriated $1.2 million from ARPA money to be spent out here at the fairgrounds. Much of that has already started. Much more of that is to come between the new 4-H building and the roofs on the horse barns. And I'd like to challenge our board also in the future that we make sure that we, as the board commissioners, keep the fairgrounds at the forefront of our duties and what we do. I'd like to see this become more of a year-round, 365 facility. We need some work on the grandstand so that we can enhance the electricity and the safety of the grandstand. And I would also like, as a vision of mine, I would like to see some form of a bigger community center gathering hall here, much like what they have in Kansasville, Porridge County, Wayne County, and Holmes County over the past five years. They've all got new ag buildings that they're able to rent year-round for weddings, gatherings, functions, conventions. And I'd like to have us work towards that someday here with the facilities here. Also, we need some upgrades on sewer and water, which we're working with our sanitary engineers department to make that happen. And I just want to commend everybody that's involved in the process. Thank you again for working with us. And I want the people, especially the 4-H kids and the people that come to the fair their whole lives, to know that we do care and we are going to spend a considerable portion of our time and money making sure that this becomes the crown jewel of Trumbull County.
These improvements that are... That have been happening, I'm glad of having it. And since I started, that was something that I was making a priority as makers are here with grounds remaining here. My first meeting as a commissioner, I was taken aback by very... I can't remember if I looked back at the 4-H building and it was horrific. And that was one of the first things that I worked on, making sure that it came through. And I'm thankful that the board that I worked with did work with us to improve that. And then just recently, I found out that the county has loaded... And by the way, I have a fact on... As a hunting consultant that's doing inspections, I found that we have federal Pacific D-rated fire hazard electric service channels throughout Trumbull County when they were fixing the Ford and Lachance buildings. And had an inventory and I'm glad that they found that they were here in the horse barns where the kids were and those just got corrupted. So that's a major safety issue and I'm really thankful that we're moving forward with maybe this a safer place for people who come to join the fair and for the kids who roam around the barns. And I want to... Whoever's here who has not been to the shows, please go see the shows. They've worked so hard all year on preparing their projects. There's a schedule. You can pick up at the fair office. I know there's a G show today. You can go and see the animals that you could be sitting on and come back Saturday to help support the kids. You can buy animals. You can actually donate to them by putting an account on the club and they'll set that and divide it so that every child who has a project will get a little bit more. So that's another way to help support the kids.
I'd just like to echo those sentiments and to say, you know, none of this happens without volunteers. The volunteers, whether they be the fair board members, whether they're still giving of their time and... And we've had a lot of two past presidents here recently. And they're very well remembered. I remember them well. But the volunteers, not only was it the fair board members, but the 4-H volunteers, the parents that give of their time, the contractors that give of their time. You know, a lot of this stuff is donated by different contractors. None of this happens without them. I mean, we've been able to few some federal state dollars into the fairgrounds and it's really helped. But we sit up here as commissioners and we take all this credit, but the people that are on the ground, the booths on the ground with the volunteers, the people that are making everything happen, so... And all those people come to the turn stuff. So I just want to say thank you. This is the best I've seen the fair look in my eight years here. We've made substantial improvements and we're going to continue to make substantial improvements. We'll do rules and like the blood trades. So I just want to say a special thank you to Barry Brown and the fair board and to all the 4-H volunteers and the kids and the parents. Thank you for making this fair what it is. And showcasing our number one... Our number one attribute here in Trumbull County, which is lost, is agriculture. You know, it's showcasing and celebrating that. So please come out to the fair, tell your friends and family, and let's have a great 177 fair. Thank you. We do have a booth inside of the grandstand. The commissioners have a booth, I believe, also Children's Services has one, our county recorder, our county engineer, our sheriff's department. We have a lot of information in there from the auditor's office regarding homestead exemption. We have some senior services things, so if you have a senior in your family, make sure you pick up some of the brochures. Yesterday in our booth, we had 229 unique visitors attended our booth yesterday. And we look to increase that throughout the week to be able to serve thousands of people here at the fair. We hope you're one of them. Spread the word to your family members. Now, I know yesterday, seniors... I know yesterday, senior services received phone calls that were generated that started here in the booth and ended up calling their office later in the day to sign up for some programs. So come and see us, the three of us will be here most of the week, and a lot of our department heads are out there. Thank you so much to all of our staff and all of our department heads that are supporting us, and all the public that we have out there, thank you again for that.
Also, one of the things that a lot of people are thinking as commissioners, that we just, was the services, that was all done by our engineer, I would make sure that he gets the proper acknowledgement for that. Yesterday, there was a hole out there, and someone fell, and I got a hold of him, and he invited, within 20 minutes, he had his back out there filling them because someone had fallen. So that's just a testament to how all of our officials feel about the fair and supporting what's going on out there, making it a state-wide experience.
Okay, with that, are there any comments for the good of Trumbull County from the public? Anybody want to come up and ask a question of us, or make a statement, or have anything for the good of Trumbull County? Okay, seeing that, once again, enjoy the fair. We've got quite a few days left, see the sights, spend your money, tell your friends and family to come on up and invite them this weekend, bring your kids out, support 4-H in their auction, and I would look forward to seeing you next week and throughout the year. Thank you again, on behalf of the board commissioners for inviting us to be a guest here tonight, hosting us, fair board, and that's all I got, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second motion.
Mr. Cancela Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Miss Frenchco?
Thank you all.